Good evening, everyone, to the committee of the whole for January 27, 2021. So the first thing in the agenda is a call to order. So do we have quorum?
Do we do pledge of allegiance first and then roll call? We have quorum.
Okay, yeah, okay. So please stand up for the place of allegiance, please. A pledge to the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so next is the roll call.
Arata Frata?
Yeah.
Cloder?
Here.
Gerhardt?
Here.
Krausey?
Here.
And Maldonado, we already indicated was going to be absent. Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Schrader?
Here.
Strassmann?
Here.
Udel?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much, Mike. The next in our agenda is the approval of the minutes for the October 28th committee of the whole meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move through, Bruce.
Second. Any question? All those in favor of approving say aye.
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 Next, the motion carries. So next in our agenda is a public appearance for not agenda items. Do we have anyone in the chambers or online on the phone?
No one here, Madam Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Scott. So next is we are going to talk about our agenda item tonight is the Town of Madison annexation. We are going to have an update. Mike sent you some the agreement this morning to use of to your review on some of the maps. And tonight we are going to have a presentation from the city staff. They are going to discuss some of the financing, infrastructure, population. So and I think Valerie is going to speak first about the agreement. Is that correct, Valerie?
I'll kick off first. Julia?
Okay.
Okay. And then I'll turn it over to Valerie on slide three.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Misty is going to be running the PowerPoint and we will send you a PDF of this after the meeting this evening. So thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on the status of the Town of Madison, intergovernmental agreement as it relates to the city of Pittsburgh, and also our planning for October 30th, 2022, which is the end of the 20-year agreement. And our presentation team tonight, Valerie is going to cover and give kind of a quick overview of the intergovernmental agreement. I'm going to provide an overview of the parcels. And then Juliet asked to have us give you kind of a tour of the properties in the Town of Madison that will be coming to Pittsburgh. I've got some other data points and then some information on sites and redevelopment opportunities. Then I'm going to turn it over to Misty to cover the financial impact. And then her and the mayor are going to kind of tag team the next steps and where we go from here. So the next slide shows the current boundaries of the Town of Madison is that, as you can see from this map, they had become an island of parcels with no geographic cohesion, which created challenges to provide services to these areas. And then with the city of Madison's interest in annexing the town and these service challenges, that led to discussions among our three communities on the next slide to negotiate that 20-year intergovernmental agreement that was signed in November of 2002 and runs through that October 30th date of 2022. And now city attorney Valerie Zissman is going to provide a quick overview of that intergovernmental agreement. And that was one of the documents that we had emailed out to you earlier today. Valerie?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to give you a little bit of a brief background in sort of how we came to be where we are. And I should add, I'm giving it to you as I understand it to be, I wasn't here 20-some years ago at the table negotiating this agreement. But as I understand it, the Town of Madison was sort of looking at its future and thinking about what would happen to it and had approached the city of Pittsburgh about possibly having the entire Town of Madison dissolved and being absorbed into the city of Pittsburgh. But there are a number of entities, as well as the city of Madison, who caught wind of these sort of secret discussions as, as I'm told they were, and essentially said, "Not so fast." At the end of the day, this matter ended up in circuit court and rather than deal with extended litigation and uncertainty that would be posed for both the city of Madison, the city of Pittsburgh, and the Town of Madison, the three governmental entities came to an agreement. And this is the agreement that is before you. And so basically, one way to look at it is that the, the intergovernmental agreement essentially outlined all the terms that would come to be, but delayed that annexation for 20 years. So in other words, this annexation almost, it's as if it has already taken place, but it had like a 20-year delayed effective date, right? So the agreement was approved by the governing bodies of all three municipalities. It was, you know, there were public hearings that happened. And then there was a cooperative plan that was put together by the planning departments in all three municipalities and then ultimately approved by the state in order for this to move forward. And so what you're left with here now is the document that was essentially put together 20-some years ago, or well, 20 years ago, anticipating what would happen 20 years down the road. There are a number of logistical questions that we still have, but as far as what is going to happen, what we have is what is before us, and that is the plan in terms of the boundaries. Well, it is possible, because I know the question has kind of floated around, is can we change any of the terms of the agreement? And the short answer to that is not really, because it would take all three parties. So that would be the Town of Madison, as well as the city of Madison and the city of Pittsburgh to come to some sort of agreement. My understanding is in some preliminary conversations with the town, they weren't interested in being annexed early, absent some provisions that neither the city of Pittsburgh nor the city of Madison were prepared to make in terms of the monetary implications that that would have. And so any kind of boundary changes, I think at this point would have to take place after October 31st of 2022. And that would just involve the city of Madison and the city of Pittsburgh, because by then the town will cease to exist. So that is sort of the general overview of how we came to be where we are. These are sort of the details and the terms that were hammered out back in 2002. And here we are in 2021, and we're looking at how to make it all work. And so I know there are a number of questions in terms of finances, which I will defer to Misty on, although I'm sure she will probably tell you there's still a lot we don't know. Part of the deal is that we take the town as it is when it dissolves, and we don't know what that will be. But we do know that we're taking the portions that are ours. I mean, that's, that's going to happen automatically. There's really no action that we need to take or any action that we could take that would prevent that from happening, because the agreement's been signed and ratified, so to speak. It's, it's on the table. So where we are now is just working on the logistical details of what's that, what it's going to entail to take over those parcels. And we're also having a number of conversations with the city of Madison in terms of coordinating our efforts and how we're going to logistically make that happen. These, these are conversations that are ongoing and certainly with additional direction from the council, we can incorporate other suggestions or other ideas in those discussions, provided that's something that the city of Madison is willing to discuss. So that's about all I have for you in terms of the overview, and I guess I'll hand the torch back to Mike.
Thanks, Valerie. And we have the presentation tonight, but I think we view this as staff as just the start of an ongoing conversation and regular updates that we'll be providing to you as the council between now and that October 30th, 2022 date. So I, I think as we get more information and work with our Madison colleagues, we'll be reporting back to, to you on a regular basis as we make progress. So on the next slide, this shows the boundary map per that intergovernmental agreement. And the two areas that will be coming to Pittsburgh are the Southdale neighborhood, which is just south of the Beltline along Highway 14. You can follow Misty's cursor there, and west of Rimrock Road. And then there's an area up on North Fishhattry Road, as well where the Zimbrick dealerships are, and also along Bryant Road. The next slide shows the actual parcels. It might be hard to read this one, but there's a yellow boundary in each of those respective areas that outlines 165 parcels total that will come to Pittsburgh. And those parcels have an assessed valuation of $120 million as of January 1st, 2020. So again, 100-
I can interrupt just one additional piece. We also are getting the Town Hall for the city of, the Town of Madison. So that's one additional piece as well.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. And Misty will give an update on that. We've got an appraisal done on that property and, and she'll have that as part of her presentation. Then the 165 parcels, they include two tax-exempt parcels. 50 of them are in the tax increment district that's in the town. 115 are non-TID. And then the breakdown of that 120 assessed value is 54 million in the TID and 66 million on non-TID. Then moving to the existing land use, there's 196 acres of town land that will become part of Pittsburgh. Up on North Fishhattry Road, there's 16 acres, and then the remaining 180 acres are in that Southdale neighborhood that's south of the Beltline and west of Rimrock Road. As you can see from this table, 50% of the land use is currently commercial. There's 14% single-family, 17% multifamily, and then some open space and government and some vacant property there. As far as the housing units, per the 2010 census, there were 674 total housing units. 627 of the units at that time, or 93% were rental. Since 2010, I added there the new units that were added in the neighborhood. That's the 2,500 Rimrock Road mixed-use building with 43, the Novation Commons, the senior housing at 60 units, and then Artisan Village, the workforce housing development at 169. So another 272 units have been added since that 2010. Those units are all rental, so when we add those and do the calculation, the housing units are at about 95% plus rental units that will be coming to Pittsburgh as, as part of the annexation. Then as we move to demographics and data, per the 2010 census, the future Pittsburgh Town of Madison residents, as you can see from this chart, they are actually more diverse than Pittsburgh's existing diverse population. It's challenging to get updated demographic data right now at the census level, and we're going to have to wait for that until the 2020 census data is released. The planning department and assessing and other people all checked, but we just couldn't get any good updated data or snapshot in time at the census track level. Now I'm going to take you on a tour of the properties in the Town of Madison that will become part of the city of Pittsburgh in October 2022. We're going to start first with the commercial properties. And thanks to Joyce for trekking out in the snow and taking some pictures of these properties to give us a current update. First of all, there's about 95, approximately 95 businesses in the Town of Madison. This was a snapshot that we had done back in 2018 at the request of Alder Cloder. So this kind of gives you just an overview of the names of the businesses in, in the respective areas. Then visually, we're starting out with, this includes the Zimbrick dealerships that are located right along Rimrock Road. Then we've got the Flex Industrial Space Buildings that the Alexander Company of Ruda Bush have. These include Exact Sciences Processing Lab, and the other building also has Delta Beer Labs. And they're so good, diverse mix of, of businesses. Then we move to the mixed-use building. This was the 2,500 Rimrock Road building that has Finka Coffee on the first floor. And this is one that we do have some TID participation in for this mixed-use building and help drive that project through the agreement with them. The next slide shows a collection of commercial buildings that are throughout this area, and they include different sectors of business as everything, from advertising to real estate and service businesses. Then we've got the multi-story office buildings that are part of the Novation Campus that the Alexander Company has developed. And you can see some of the anchor tenants on those, in those respective buildings. Then we move to a couple of retail service businesses, including the Capital Petro, C Store and Car Wash. And then we've got the multi-tenant building that on the back end has Pitcher's Pub located in, in that. Years ago, there, there used to be a Nedro Boz formal where in the front of that. And as you can see, when you're driving the Beltline and even along Highway 14, this area is popular with self-storage units, not only some of the older ones, which is depicted in the middle, but the latest one is the one on the top there. And we've gotten word from Dane County that along Ski Lane, where there's currently a office building for the Girl Scouts and then a vacant lot. And we've gotten word from the county that there's a proposal for a four-story vertical storage facility that's winding its way through Dane County zoning, who has purview over that. And that's actually a permitted use based on county zoning at, at this time. So we'll keep you posted on that proposal as it comes forward. Then we've got a couple of older warehouse buildings that are tucked back in there. One is the Books for School. And then the other one is the former Ickey Construction. That's a, a real prime redevelopment site for us in, in that area. Then some of you might remember the Rock and Jump facility. They close their, their doors and operations, and that's currently leased now to the Doxa Church. Alexander Company owns the building, but leases it to the church. Then as we shift over to the Fishhattry Road area that's coming to Pittsburgh, we've got the portfolio of the Zimbrick dealerships that are up there on North Fishhattry Road, Honda, Buick, Infiniti, and the used cars. Then the next slide shows the Zimbrick headquarters offices and then some other related auto services as well. And you could see the parking lot there. That is actually the parking lot now for the new Hyundai dealership that's located off the Beltline Frontage Road there. Then we move to Bryant Road. That's the one that kind of runs north and south from the, the Frontage Road to, to our friends at Park Bank there. And along Bryant Road, there are more auto services, Zimbrick's prep department, car wash and service. But then we also have Badger Sporting Goods and Kavanaugh Restaurant Supply located in that area. Shifting to the housing units in the Southdale neighborhood, the first one up is the Artisan Village, which this is that new 169 affordable workforce housing development that was developed by the Alexander Company and, and Bear Development. So they've, residents have moved in and that just opened this year. Then next, we have some of the smaller multifamily buildings along Deer Valley Road. Some of these 16, and you can see some four-unit buildings. These are all under individual owners. There's not one main owner of all these properties. So these are more of those mom and pop kind of multifamily buildings that are, are owned. Then we move to, we've got three more 16-unit buildings along Pheasant Ridge Trail, and these again are all individually owned, even though they're on the same road. And next, we move to some of the larger multifamily apartment complexes that are under one ownership. Each of these three are under one ownership, different ownerships for each one, on Deer Valley Road and then Pheasant Trail. But they're the larger complexes. You can see 130 units, 296, and then 44. Then we've got the most recent, the 60-unit affordable Novation Senior Commons, Novation Parkway, and that was developed in partnership with Bear Development. Then there are two condominium developments back there that, one is called Buckingham Place, and the other one is Ski Lane condo. So you can see they've got 12 units in one and then 40 units in another. And then there are 11 single-family homes in the Southdale neighborhood as well. So this is the portfolio of single-family homes that are, that are in the area. One thing about the housing stock I should mention is most of it was really developed in the 70s and 80s, so it's a, it's an older aged housing stock. A lot of the multifamily back there probably doesn't have the modern amenities that are in the new complexes and, and apartment units that are built today. Then moving on to some potential development and redevelopment sites, we've got the Novation Campus that the Alexander Company continues to develop. And you can see their concept plan on the left there. So the right-hand side of, of that schematic is Rimrock Road, and then to the north would be the Beltline, and then on the left would be Highway 14. And then Joyce did a good graphic for us here to kind of show some of the lots that are still available. And you can see there's a total of approximately 21 acres, although as you can see with, I think it's lot eight in there, six, seven, and eight kind of frames of a large stormwater pond in there. So that stormwater acreage is included in that number, so it, we don't have developable acreage of, of 21. But there are some good lots still there, and we continue to collaborate with our friends at the, the Alexander Company to market those for appropriate uses. And then there is a Southdale neighborhood land use plan. And so some of the future land use redevelopment sites are identified on this map here. You can see a couple of parcels that have some of those older single-family homes. And again, these would be future land use redevelopment sites. You know, they're totally fine as existing uses, you know, at this time. And when they come to Pittsburgh, it's just, at some point in time, if there's a redevelopment opportunity, it kind of gives, FLU stands for future land use there, and it tells you what the potential redevelopment of that site would be per the Southdale neighborhood plan. So you can see some on Ski Lane. And that 2,700 on the right-hand side, that's where that proposal is for the four-story vertical storage. Then we've got a couple of more sites along Rimrock Road, and then that Latitude 43, that's the former Ickey Construction site there that we just put as a redevelopment site. We're not sure if there's any contamination on that one, so that might need a little more due diligence on that particular site. Then up next is the Southdale neighborhood plan, land use map, so you can just kind of see the different districts that are identified there. You could see some of them are TOD, which is Transit Oriented Development, because the red line that runs through there with the T in the middle in the gold bubble, this, a lot of this planning was premised on transit-oriented development. If there was some kind of transit that would run along the rail line that runs through this corridor here. Then up next, the next two slides and tables, they define the development parameters within that Southdale neighborhood plan. And we included the link to that plan below the, the table if you want to look at that more in depth and familiarize yourself with it. But it just gives the parameters per the different districts on that map in the previous slide. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention that the Southdale neighborhood is also part of the larger destination district visioning being done in conjunction with the Alliant Energy Center master planning there. So this just kind of shows the proximity of that and some of the connectivity to different neighborhoods on the south side of, of the Madison-Fitchburg area here on both the north and south sides of the Beltline. And I've got links to those documents and plans as well for you. So with that, I'll close. And up next is our finance director, Misty Dodge, to provide information on the financial impact.
I would like to preface this with there still is a lot of unknowns and a lot of uncertainty. Also, what we're putting in front of you now is kind of a framework of things that we know that we need to hammer out a little bit more as we move closer to that dissolution date. So from a financial perspective, there's really two components to the impact that we're going to have. You know, what's our impact at the date that the dissolution happens? And then what's our impact of providing the services that we need to provide to these new property owners that are coming into the city of Pittsburgh? So at the dissolution, the agreement actually outlines that. So essentially, if you boil it down, whatever assets the, the town has when they're done and whatever amount that they owe when they're done, whatever that difference is, the city of Madison and the city of Pittsburgh need to split. At this point, there is going to be some debt outstanding. We do expect there's going to be some TID responsibilities that the city's going to have, and there will be a little bit of assets there. But I'm guessing that they probably aren't investing into their assets as much as, say, what we would be doing, because they know that this is ending at some point. So wouldn't it make sense for a town that's going to be ending to purchase a new piece of equipment, because they know that they won't get as much value out of it? So my guess is that at the end of all of this, there will likely be a net cost that the city of Madison and the city of Pittsburgh has to absorb, and we don't know that at this point. And it will be dependent on the final audits and the final negotiations that we have with the city of Madison. One piece that we do have coming to us, though, would be the Town Hall appraisal, sorry, the Town Hall currently will be coming into Pittsburgh. We did do an appraisal on that in order to see what the value was, and it came back at about 1.5 million. And that gets thrown into the whole pot with everything else that needs to be allocated. So the bigger impact to us, though, is what it's going to cost us to provide services to these new residents. So this is just a summary on the revenue side. I'm sure you remember from budget that levy limits are our biggest constraint. There is a levy limit adjustment at time of annexation, which is based on the property taxes that those parcels paid to the town the year before. So there's a couple of nuances here. One, the taxes that a property pays to the town are often lower than what taxes would be paid to a city, because the town provides a very different level of service than what cities pay. So I know there's going to be a lot of discussion about what taxes these particular properties are going to pay when they come into the city of Pittsburgh. But it's more important when we're looking at our financial impact, how much that levy limit adjustment is going to be. Again, that's based on what they paid to the town. There's also going to be a timing issue here. So the dissolution happens October 30th of 2022. We actually won't get that levy limit adjustment until our 2023 budget. We obviously will have costs beginning in 2022 that we're going to need to be able to absorb. And there is a TID that will be coming to the city, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. But we will expect to get a levy limit adjustment when that TID closes as well, just like when any other TID closes. I expect that that'll be 2027 or earlier, and it should be about $175,000 adjustment that we'll get then. On the revenue side, there also will be some user fees, you know, park fees and court fines and permits and all of that stuff, but I expect it to be relatively small. And then same with the state aids. So we are still working through with the Department of Revenue how those aids are going to be allocated, if they are at all. So there's a lot of unknowns there still, but in the whole scheme of our budget, it's going to be a relatively small amount that we can expect. On the expense side, though, this is where I think we should spend a bunch of time. So the biggest piece of our responsibility is going to be on staff. You know, at our heart, we are a service provider, and to provide those services, we need to have the staff available to provide those. Also, some of the positions are going to need to be budgeted in 2022 before the dissolution. So an example would be police officers will have to go through the police academy. So we need to make sure we build in time for that. Assessments is all based on 1-1 of 22 in this example. A lot of that work happens in the first quarter and will need to be done long before that October date. So some of the positions and some of the needs are going to have to be funded before the dissolution and almost all of it before we actually get that levy limit adjustment. In the CIP that we just finished, the 2021 to 2030 CIP, in that operating impact section of the Town of Madison project, we did identify some staff positions. These ones, though, are ones that were very truly directly resulted from the Town of Madison. You know, they would be boots on the ground in those new areas. But there are other positions, too, that are going to be needed because, because the town is coming in, but also because we are continuing to grow. So that's what this list is. So I'd like to spend a little bit of time talking briefly about each one of these positions. Some of them you've seen already through the 2021 budget requests, but they were not funded in 2021, but you'll see them coming back in 2022 and should be prioritized. So the first four were those ones that were included in the CIP. So in the senior center, a social worker. Mike mentioned that there was that relatively large senior housing development that will have some interaction with the senior center. Also, a maintenance worker in Public Works. We expect that we'll be able to do a 50/50 split there. So in the winter, they're working on highway and snow plowing, and in the summer, they're doing more parks maintenance functions. And that one could probably wait until October in order to hire. Then there's the three police officers. Those we should hire earlier in the year of 2022, again, because they have to go through the academy, get acclimated to the city, that type of a thing. And then in the clerks department, the election workers. So we expect that there'll be another polling location over in the town that will need to staff and will need to have the supplies for. So those four were the ones that were included in the CIP. And then the rest of them are ones that are- And then the rest of them are ones that are indirectly, I would say, affected by the town. So the first one is that GIS coordinator. We saw this one in the two thousand and twenty-one budget request. If you recall, there's some pretty significant changes happening that we're going to need to be able to address in order to continue our use of GIS. And GIS is something that is used by multiple departments across the city and is very important to our operations. So that position is going to be pretty important. And that is another one that should be hired towards the beginning of the year because there's a lot of work that's going to have to go in in order to get ready for those changes. The next one is the Building Inspection Department, an inspector. This would cover both the additional inspections that are needed for the new area and then also if there's any property maintenance issues there. And assessing, a technician would be best. So this would be a data entry person. But the state did change the rules starting this year that anybody that does work in the assessing database has to be certified through the state. So it will have to be somebody that's actually has that certification to work in it. And as I mentioned before, a lot of that work happens in the first quarter. So that's going to be something we'll need to address and invest in at the beginning of two thousand and twenty-two. And this one is a little unique. In the CIP, we did include LTE staff, thinking that they could come in and kind of help us get the data together. And then it wouldn't be needed long-term. But based on the current operations of the assessing department, they really do need that additional help for the overall operations. The next position is in the Fire Department, so a firefighter inspector position. This was also seen during the two thousand and twenty-one budget and was not funded. This would be primarily responsible for all of the inspections or fire inspections across the city. The next one is a relatively new idea. Aaron brought this up. And the more I think about it, the more I think it will be extremely helpful to a lot of departments. So you look over on the side, you know, clerks, finance, assessing, zoning, economic development, and the list could go on. We all could really use some additional clerical help that can alleviate some of the pressure from your higher-level employees in order to continue to keep getting the work done that needs to. And, you know, we can't keep a full-time person functional and effective for an entire year by department. But if you look at the cyclical-ness of each of our departments, we think that we'd be able to keep one person plenty busy over an entire year by sharing them across all of those departments. The next one is in the Public Works Department. I'm having some conversations with the director. He thinks there is a lot of value in having an assistant director position. You guys have not seen this one yet. You will see it in the two thousand and twenty-two budget requests. This would alleviate some pressure from the director and make sure that with as many projects that are happening, that we can keep staying on top of them. The one after that is in the Human Resources Department. As we have been taking on more staff and as we're taking on more staff as the town is absorbed, there's a need for some additional help there. In talking to the HR manager, she thinks the best help would be having a part-time person to help specifically with the FMLA piece. They could not use the clerical float because the FMLA is a very specialized area. And she also thinks a part-time position would be sufficient and would actually be pretty easy to fill based on what she's seen in the industry. There's probably a fair amount of people with that FMLA specialty that would be interested in part-time work. So the benefit of part-time, of course, is it's cheaper for the city, both in wages because of the number of hours but then also the benefits that would be paid for. The next one is in Public Works as well, an engineering technician. So this would be someone that would do more of the construction observation items. We likely could bill a lot of the time spent by this person to the different developers that are having a need for an engineer tech. So there might be an offsetting revenue source there to help pay for this position, too. But we think we'd be able to not hire out as many things, which could be helpful to the developers also because it would come at a cheaper price point. And then last, in the Police Department, we talked about three officers before. There's also a need for a supervisory or command staff position. So four positions overall is what they think is important. So there's also going to be a lot of equipment and supplies that's needed to address the additional needs. So this list here is from that CIP that we adopted. And it really is just the equipment for those four positions that we talked about that were identified in the CIP. There are likely going to be other equipment and supplies amounts, depending on the other list that those are needed. A lot of them are, I'd say, office positions. So most of it will probably be IT-related, maybe a couple of vehicles for some of them, but that we have not costed out yet. Infrastructure needs is really the big wild card. So we know that we're going to be getting a lot of infrastructure. Generally, when a municipality is nearing its end, it's not going to invest in its infrastructure. So my gut is that the infrastructure that we get will probably need some maintenance. But we don't know to what level yet. So a couple of years ago, we did have the Public Works Director at the time go through their infrastructure. And that's the chart that you see here. So the roads, we're going to get a little over three centerline miles and just shy of eleven lane miles. A majority of it is in good to very good condition, at least it was as of a couple of years ago. But there is Bryant Road and Dattle Court that's going to need a reconstruction. And then we're a little unsure about the West Beltline Frontage Road and how that's going to shake out between us and the city of Madison. There's also three bridges that will be coming to the area, in the area that will be coming to Pittsburgh. There's a cable-style bridge over the railroad tracks, a pedestrian bridge over the Belt Line, and then a tunnel on Ski Lane. And at this point, we are not clear whose maintenance responsibility that is and what that cost is going to be. So a lot of uncertainty there. In the water and sewer utility, at this point, all of the properties that are coming to Pittsburgh are currently serviced by the city of Madison with the city of Madison infrastructure. So our assumption is that City of Madison will continue to provide that service and will bill those residents for that service. We do need to get that confirmed. On the stormwater utility, there's six-point-three curb miles that will come to Pittsburgh. And we are unclear about if there's any municipal ponds that we'll need to continue to maintain and make sure is baked into our stormwater rates. And then on the park side, there is one park, Southdale Park, that's going to be coming into the city. It's a five-point-eight-acre park. And it does have some amenities, but it's not up to what we would call city standards. So we suspect we'll have a shelter being requested in that area along with some other amenities. And so in the bottom-right corner of this slide, I've got from the CIP that infrastructure amount that we have in the CIP, most of which funded by levy, some of it by utilities. That was really just a placeholder, again, because a lot of this is unknown. There also will probably be some of these projects that could be paid for by borrowing if they're larger reconstruction projects. So some of that stuff will still have to get figured out. There is some good news. So the town TID number two has been very successful in the town. And there was special legislation that allows that TID to become a city TID once the dissolution happens. So the boundary of the TID is on the screen in front of you, so you can see that. And this would be a lot of that novation campus projects that Mike was talking about along with that senior housing development. And so at dissolution, we are able to recreate that TID as a city TID. There are some development agreements outstanding, including that multi-use building with the coffee shop in it. But our responsibility is unknown at this point because it depends a lot on how much payment they receive from the town between the time their agreement happened and the dissolution. The goal ultimately is to close the TID as quick as we can. So have it open, pay off the obligations. I'd like to see us keep it open for that year for the Affordable Housing Fund and then close it as soon as we can. When we do that, we will get that levy limit adjustment, which is expected to be about a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So then looking at next steps. We are continuing to have quarterly meetings with our colleagues at the city of Madison. And then we're bringing in other people on staff as needed to make sure that we're coordinating as best as we can. We also need to check in with the Town of Madison to make sure we are staying up to date on kind of what their status is, both urban operational and a financial perspective. Definitely have a lot of work to do on the numbers, refining and updating those numbers as we learn more and as we're able to, again, get a better picture about what's going to happen. Along those same lines, further inventorying those assets, figuring out what our maintenance or replacement needs are going to be for those items. There's a lot of procedural questions still hanging out there. So voting procedures, property tax bills, you know, court cases that are still pending, the garbage collection. There's a lot of those mechanical logistical pieces that still need to get worked out. And then identifying funding sources both for the short term and long term. So the town TID closure will help. In my plan, the timing of TID four closure at the city level is going to be important because we'll get some relief when that TID closes from a levy limit perspective and can put that towards funding these needs in the town. And then, as I mentioned, we could borrow for certain infrastructure projects, too, to help pay for some of them. Then also continue to evaluate our non-financial costs, benefits, risks, and opportunities. So looking at the different documents and processes we go through. So the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and thirty-one CIP is coming up soon. At this point, it's probably just going to be status quo as we continue to figure out what the needs are and what the status is. In the two thousand and twenty-two budget, though, we're going to really have to start having serious conversations about what we need to fund and what needs to be prioritized in order to meet the needs of the new area. I think we need to prioritize those staffing positions that we talked about before. As I mentioned, some of those positions will need to be funded sooner than that dissolution date. And for two thousand and twenty-two, we won't get that levy limit adjustment to account for those additional costs. So that's where I'm hoping we can time it either exactly with the TID foreclosure or use a strategy that we have available to us, knowing that that closure will be happening in the very, very near future. Then for the two thousand and twenty-three budget, we would have, obviously, a full year of all of the staffing costs and all the other costs that are coming on. And then that's when that levy limit adjustment, we will be able to realize that. That's all I had for my piece of it.
I need to jump in now, maybe? And if you can go back to the staff positions needed. I think, you know, there's a million things that we're have to figure out, some big, some small. And you see some of those here, there might be other ones that you've thought of. But to me, this page right here is the most challenging piece to all of this. And I've talked for a couple of years now about the cost of the town and how we can't do pet projects. And this right here is why this list is kind of in order of priority for the most part. But these positions are expensive and they are necessary. And right now, a lot of these departments are already struggling to do what they need to do for our city's citizens. And you see other things that are just not getting done as fast as we'd like to. Apache Drive, the Mobile Home Park, and just a ton of other stuff. And, you know, some of the sewer, the water issues throughout the city and some of those projects. And that's because staff is just swamped. And it's something I see at City Hall all the time. And I know how many hours people are working and have worked and above and beyond what they need. And this, you know, there's some requirements, like the GIS coordinator that we have to do. But this, to me, is the biggest challenge we have. And for the next, you know, two to three years, I don't know where we're going to find all this money. There's some strategies Misty talked about that will help that. But if you look at these positions and you figure they're over a hundred thousand dollars a person, I don't know what the average would be, but it's over a hundred thousand dollars. And so that's almost two million dollars just in these staffing positions we're going to need. And we just went through the budget. You saw how challenging that budget is already. I don't know how it's going to happen, but some of these things need to happen, you know, next year. And so, you know, we'll, you know, spread out as much as we can and use all the strategies that we can. But, you know, if anything else, this is where it's critical because our staff are struggling as it is. And when you add all those additional businesses and residents, then the impacts on assessing, building inspection, the clerks and the police department and even Public Works and Parks and, you know, a million other places, Senior Center. I mean, to me, that's a huge piece. We got, you know, the great building that's affordable senior housing, and that's awesome. It's going to put more stress on our social workers than the senior center, though. And, you know, that's why I think that is so important up there is because of the direct impact that it has on those residents. So that's just the reality, and it's challenging, and it's going to be challenging. But, you know, that's why when I've said, you know, some of these other projects people want to do, we can't do it in the next few years, this is why. It's not because of what I like or don't like about those projects. I just know our staff is struggling right now, and this is putting a whole lot more on their plate.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. And if people have questions, we can do it through the chat, okay? So raise your hand. One of my questions, Misty, is, okay, how much are the revenues in taxes from the town? Have you seen any financial lately or an audit from the town?
So the last audit that I received was for two thousand and eighteen. And we're working to get the two thousand and nineteen audit, which we know is done, and then get the two thousand and twenty audit that they're in process. That will really give us a key or a clue into what their correct status is. When you're looking at their tax collection, that's where we really need to focus on that levy limit adjustment that we're going to get. And it was right around a little less than eight hundred thousand dollars. And that's the amount that's based on the taxes that they pay to the town. So yes, part of the conversation will be how much will these properties pay in Pittsburgh taxes? That is important for the people, the property owners there. But from our budget perspective, it's that levy limit adjustment that we're going to have to watch.
But it's important to mention that, yeah, we are acquiring a lot, we need to hire more people and we are acquire, you know, infrastructure. But also, we are going to acquire some, you know, we are going to collect taxes, you know, from the town that is going to pay for some of these staffing needs that we have, too. Maybe at the beginning, no, you know, maybe some of the staffing that we really need to hire at the beginning of two thousand and twenty-two are going to be more challenging than the one that we need to hire in two thousand and twenty-three. But that one is my question. So I have more questions, but then I'm going to go through Randy. He has a question.
Uh, yeah.
Oh, sorry, Randy Gabriela is first. Okay, I'm going through the list, okay. Gabriela.
So what is the source of the? I'm just curious why it's difficult to get the numbers? Is it just that it's, you know, our staff doesn't have time to actually look at them? Or is it, is it a, is there a resistance to getting those numbers? I'm just curious about, well, I guess the, and my follow-up question to that is, do you anticipate we're going to be able to have more of these numbers solid in the lead-up to the two thousand and twenty-two budgeting process?
That's the hope as far as the town's overall financial picture. Yes, I expect we'll be able to get the two thousand and nineteen audit shortly. And the two thousand and twenty audit, we'll continue to work with them to get that as soon as it's ready. It is public information, so it's a matter of going out and getting it and requesting it. As far as the rest of the uncertainty, like what the infrastructure status is and how much it's going to be to maintain it and cost it, a lot of that is a Pittsburgh staffing issue. And also, you don't want to do that analysis too early because it might continue to degrade or might significantly change, and you're basically redoing the work later. So part of it's a timing issue and a capacity issue.
Got it.
Randy.
My question is TID-related. Just to clarify and to re-educate me from what we went through last year and the presentation we gave on TID. If I remember correctly, we, the city of Pittsburgh, are, there's a certain threshold, and we're near that threshold as far as TID. And if we acquire the Town of Madison's TID as well, I know you mentioned, though, some of them are committed to closure. But what does that do to us? Isn't there, are we bound by state statutes? I mean, is there a conflict there or? Yeah, I guess that's my question, if you understand what I'm asking.
Absolutely. So there was special legislation that allowed the town TID to just be created at the city without worrying about that twelve percent test. So we've talked in the past that we can't create any new TIDs because we exceed that twelve percent test. But there's a special exception for this situation. So that TID won't be a problem, but it will contribute. So that tid won't be a problem, but it will contribute to us exceeding that 12% test in the future. Uh, once tid four closes, the, the town tid doesn't contribute more than what that capacity will be alleviated. So.
Okay.
Our future tids, not this one, but our future ones will all be needed or will all be predicated on the tid four closing first.
Okay, alright, okay. Thank you.
Okay, I, I have another question about the levy adjustment. Do you have any idea, uh, the range of percentage that, how much it would be?
So the amount that I included in the presentation was based on the town taxes, each one of those properties paid on the current tax bills, the ones that we're collecting right now. So if their levy and their property bills all stay the same, uh, that will be the number that we get. So I suspect it'd be at least right in that ballpark.
Well, can you repeat the number?
I can. Seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Um, okay, any other question or I'll continue asking question? Uh, Dorothy?
Yeah, that, um, seven sixty-eight is both residential and commercial?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, my other question is, uh, so do we know how many vacant land we are gonna have? I know that you showed Mike some of the parcels. Do you know in total, how much is that number?
Um, just with the novation campus, it was, you know, shy of that twenty-one. Uh, the other redevelopment sites, the, some of those had existing uses on like single family homes, but some of it was some vacant acreage there too, Julia. Um, one of the larger parcels is the one that's proposing that, um, uh, vertical storage facility that's on the lot just north of the Girl Scout building there along Highway fourteen.
My other question because of that story, is that the city of Fitch will have any say in that? This is gonna be?
We, we checked Julia on that and because under town zoning at this point in time, the zoning on that property allows for, uh, storage as a permitted use. So because there's no, you know, formal action that they have to do, you know, for the project, like a rezoning or anything like that, uh, there, there isn't any, um, anything that we can do at that, this point in time. That's like the other storage development, the new one that you see from the, the Beltline that went in, you know, within the last couple of years. Um, when we had heard about that proposal, we had asked the same question and, uh, it's just not under our purview because of it being a permitted use on that property right now.
I'd say that's one of the, one of a few, a number of areas that was not done very well in the agreement. We should have rights over all those property.
Willie, I would just add, looking forward, um, if somebody is looking at the vacant property that's available there and they are looking to do a rezoning, uh, then they have to comply with our future land use plan of the Southdale neighborhood.
Uh, okay, I, I have more question, but then Randy and then Dorothy, okay?
Uh, question I think is for Mike. Uh, we are, or maybe Misty, we're acquiring the Town of Madison City Hall or Town Hall?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just looking at the map and what, what part do I not understand? I thought at least along Fishhat tree, the boundary is the Beltline, but the Town Hall is much further north, is it not on Fishhat?
Yes, yes it is. That was the one outlier that's coming to the, to the city of Pittsburgh.
Right, and I remember you mentioned the outlier. Well, why is that? It just seems odd. I mean, it's just the way it was set up?
Yeah. You're correct, it is odd. It's another of those things that doesn't make sense necessarily in here. But I think, you know, what we've talked about is staff and city of Madison is open to this is that, you know, is there a way to essentially swap the Town Hall for some properties that are contiguous to Pittsburgh? Probably around Fishhat, uh, North Fishhat Road, there are, there's like one property that the, sit the town, or the city line of Madison and Pittsburgh goes right through the middle of their building. So, you know, is that a building where we can get everything into Pittsburgh? Um, so there's a few properties like that that we'd like to clean up. And so, you know, I look at that as, yeah, the value is one and a half million dollars, but beyond that, if that's developed, cause if we kept it, we'd probably sell it to someone to put up some apartments or something like that. So that's like twenty million dollars of value probably. So that's really where I look at it as, maybe they're not gonna do that, but we would see it as twenty million dollars of value. So we'd like twenty million dollars of value prior, probably along North Fishhat Road, clean up some of those boundaries and, uh, you know, really try to have even more say in what happens in that area because right now, the city of Madison doesn't come yet below the Beltline very often. And so there's some neighborhoods over there that I feel like we can make a huge impact if they're in Pittsburgh, cause they're not.
Alright, well, good, good, alright.
Okay, next I have Dorothy and next.
Julia, can I just, just add one thing to the mayor's comments there? Um, two things, uh, he mentioned the Engelhardt property is the one on Greenway Cross where the, the municipal boundary goes through one of their buildings there and they have to have, you know, a, a city of Pittsburgh fire inspection, a city of Madison fire inspection. So that's one area that's on a priority list to clean up. And then the other one that's kinda unique is, I showed you the, the parcels immediately west of Bryant Road where Kavanaugh Restaurant Supply is, a couple of the Zimbric Auto Services and everything. There's another strip of parcels to the west of those parcels. So between that first parcel strip and then the church, that's there, the, the Catholic Church, there's another strip there that, uh, we would like to kinda square off and, and clean that up. Uh, the front portion of, of that strip includes the new Hyundai dealership that's right along the, the frontage road of the Beltline, uh, there. So the parking lot for the Hyundai dealership is, uh, coming to Pittsburgh, but the actual dealership building and then those strip of buildings that run to the south from there are not. And then you get to the, the drive aisle for the, the church. So that would be another area. And then one other conversation that we're having is with our public safety folks in talking with the, the chiefs, um, Chad, Joe and, and Patrick. One thing that they suggested is, uh, as we finish up the final boundaries, um, uh, areas that we either put a, the road all in one municipality or the other, instead of doing it down the middle, because that causes a lot of headaches for them as far as whose responsibility it is to respond, uh, to an area if there's an accident, if the boundary goes right down the middle of the road. So we're, they're looking at that for us, uh, the chiefs are, to kinda guide us on, uh, where do we draw those lines from a, a street jurisdiction as part of those final, uh, boundaries, if there's any adjustments that need to be made.
Can, can I, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I know there's a couple of people ahead of me. I just wanted to ask about, um, the, is, are, are other parts of Pittsburgh on the table here? Cause I mean, the same sort of issues happen like Raymond Road, there's like two houses on Raymond Road that are, um, Pittsburgh and the rest are Madison and Ally Drive, of course, is like ridiculous. And, and I think a lot of it has to do with like, when police, same thing, when police calls happen, you have like two municipalities and, and neighbors in both municipalities sort of scrambling on like, who calls the police? Is that gonna be a part of this discussion as well? Are we just talking about this for? I asked Mayor Satya about that and doing a br- a bigger cleanup of the borders, because you're right, there's a number of borders that could be a lot better than what they are. And she said that she's not interested in a, a bigger discussion at this point in time. It's not to say that she won't change her mind or, you know, even the next year, she might change, you know, change her mind and I, I'll continue to ask her about that. I'm not gonna hound her about it, but I did ask her that question because I agree, there's a lot of other places that we should be doing that. And at this time, she just wanted to do that minor thing with the town and not the broader, um, fixing that should be done.
Okay, so I have in the queue Dorothy and then Tom and then I have Joe, do you want to speak again? And then Gabriela, for now, okay? So Dorothy.
Okay. Um, related to Town Hall, my speculation over the years has been, um, in the paragraph about the Town Hall transferring says it includes contents, which was fire, fire engines and all this, that at the time of the agreement probably sounded like, oh wow, there's a lot of value in that without really looking forward to understand that, that value is going to be all but gone by the time it got to now. And that has proven to be so. Um, the town has contracted with Madison for fire services and they have sold off fire equipment. So we don't even get the value that we would have gotten by selling old fire trucks, say. Um, which kinda sucks. There's some little bits of manipulation that's gone on over the years related to the entire agreement and the ongoing, um. One thing that I'd suggested at the very beginning of all these discussions is let the town have Southdale and we'll take Ally Drive. Would seem simple, not simple, um, because there's, um, school districts to consider al- along with everything else. So everything that we talk about is incredibly complex. Um, when I first put my hand up, we were talking about, uh, storage and brought to mind the current, um, old storage facility that they have that's north of the train tunnel, uh, up against Highway fourteen. Um, I would hope that at, in, in some way, at some point, we can take really undesirable properties like that and find a way to, um, force them to do something somewhat better. I don't know if we'll have to grandfather everything in as it is now and wait for a sale or something before we can make changes, but I'd sure like to use a real critical eye in looking at things like that.
Okay, thank you, Dorothy. Next, Tom.
I'll pass for right now, I'll, come back to me in a few minutes.
Okay, Gabriela.
Is there any opportunity to hire current Town of Madison staff, um, after the town dissolves, like for poli- police officers? Take them on so that we don't have to train somebody new in early on 2022, but take someone that's already experienced? Or other staffers, like assessing, I assume they have some sort of, they have an assessing department, could we hire one of their staff to be a technician?
I can answer the assessing question. So they, you, they have a contracted assessor, so they don't have assessing staff on hand. Not that Erin answered the police one.
Yeah, for the police, um, I think we, I think in the agreement, they'll skip the first round and make it to the second round of like interviews, but, uh, knowing, um, you know, pretty much all the people that they have, they're, it's unlikely that they meet our qua- our quality. Um, I know one person that they hired was fired at a previous job as a police officer, so that.
Chad to have the, just, or are the chief to have the discretion to hire the people that he really wants?
He's required permission, but yeah, the, the initial indication is based on what we know, probably not.
Got it. Oh, okay, so even, it's my turn to do a question now, okay? Uh, so in the Town of Madison intergovernmental agreement, you know, in the package, item number seven is, is about jo- a job continuity of town employees. So there is like a table there. Do we need to still, do we need to pay this severance package to these people? So that one is so part, it should be part of their cost, isn't it?
That's, that's part of our cost at the time that it dissolves. So whatever amount that they owe more than what they have, whatever that net difference is between us and Madison will need to absorb. And then yes, there's some severance payments and other things like that that will need to be paid for between us and the city of Madison.
Any other question? I, I have another question for Mike. Mike, uh, so, uh, also was reading in the, in this, um, in those agreement that there is a Genesis, uh, development building. It was previously is a business incubator, but it was funded by CDBG money. So, uh, is the city, I don't know if this is still on, uh, that, uh, Genesis building? And is that liability have been, you know, um, you know, paid? Or do you know anything about that or you, Misty, about if we are gonna be liable for that loan?
So I would say there's, there's a few different moving pieces there that we, we don't know at this point. Uh, there's also an, an EPA loan that we're a little unclear about how that all shakes out. So there's, it's another one of those items that we know we need to continue to refine and learn more about.
Okay. But that, 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 uh, Genesis building was, is a business incubator, isn't it, Mike?
It was operated as that before, but I don't know if it's still operated as that currently. Yeah. But I'll check on that for you, Julia.
Okay. Uh, okay. Um, so, uh, Tom, do you want to ask a question?
Yeah, thank you. Is this on?
Is it on?
You can ask.
Um, Misty, I'm gonna come to you for a minute. Um, the staffing needs that I saw, Misty? And you're talking about a social worker and three cops and one DPW? Where did this come from? And why are those a priority versus the others?
So those ones that you listed were the ones that were included in the CIP document that's been approved by council and are, were directly needed because of the properties within the town. The other ones were more ancillary or more indirectly affected by the town, but were not boots on the ground in that area necessarily.
Where did, okay, I'm with you. Where did we get the staffing needs, the priority? What I'm trying to say is a priority and the numbers. Um, uh, I heard what you said about the budget, but where did this come from?
So mostly in consultation with other department heads. So they know their needs the most and have been spending a lot of time evaluating how their departments will be affected by the town. And then a lot of them too came from the different, uh, new staffing proposals that you guys have seen for sure in 2021 budget and some of them for a couple of budgets before that too.
From the town, is there any equipment, um, Dorothy started to touch on, is there any equipment or personnel in this agreement that we have to, that we will get? Um, I heard what the mayor said about personnel, but my question is, I, there's no one then from the town coming to Pittsburgh as of this point? And what equipment do we get from the town when this agreement in 2022 comes about?
I can answer the equipment piece. So, uh, part of that section in there is where we have to look at all of the assets that are left from the town that they still own as of October 30th. And all of that equipment would be factored in there into that calculation as well, is what that Kelly Blue Book value, for lack of a better phrase, is. Uh, so that will all be kinda thrown into the, the overall net responsibility or gain that the city of Madison and city of Pittsburgh will have to split.
Okay, and so at this time, there's no personnel that we've, um, um, said we'll take, if I'm, if I'm hearing this right. I'm talking about through the whole town, all of them. DPW, clerk, assisted clerk, cops, firefighters, we're not taking anybody at this time. And from my understanding, they may have to reapply for their job, is that right?
I would say that they are welcome to apply for any jobs in Pittsburgh, but there's no guarantee of, that any of them would have a job in Pittsburgh. So if we do have openings, for example, at, you know, Public Works, they have some Public Works employees who I think would like to come to Pittsburgh and they are welcome to apply. And we might, you know, we're not gonna have four positions, like there's four of them, if I remember right. And it's kinda, you know, we might take one of them, we might take someone else who's better. It's, there's no guarantee from us on any of those people as we're hiring these positions.
Um, mayor, in reference to Ally Drive, you talking to the mayor of Madison, um, from right, from what I'm, from what you just said, that was a no, that, uh, the city has given you?
Yes, that's correct.
That brings me to my next point. Um, for yourself, you don't have to agree with me, but for yourself, um, don't trust the city. Don't trust them. I don't. And I gotta tell you something that Rainey brought up, but this Town of Madison, the building, um, I may not be here, but, uh, for future owners, be, be aware. Don't be in a hurry to sell that. Let's think about this for a minute. That property is worth a lot of money. When I go to the football game, I pass it. When I go to basketball games, I pass it. If that's all taken down, that may be a heck of a spot for something the city needs. I'm just saying, don't be in a big hurry. I don't trust the city. I didn't trust this agreement when Bowman and Vivian signed it, and I don't trust it now. And I remember it very well. I remember it so well. There was big talk that the City of Pittsburgh should have got the arboretum. And what happened? Madison wanted it. Madison got- Let me say that again. Madison got what Madison wanted. Pittsburgh got the leftovers. And there's a whole lot of people in the City of Pittsburgh that feel this way. So when it comes to the city, be careful.
The town hall?
I think it's a trump card. I wouldn't be in a big hurry to get rid of that unless I got an awful lot of trump cards from Madison. And, um, there's no question about it, uh, the mayor's right. Correct me if I'm wrong, mayor. But staffing is gonna be the biggest part of this whole agreement. It's gonna kill us. It's absolutely gonna kill us. And, um, but just be aware of, just be aware of Madison shenanigans. I hate to say that, but over fifty years, I've watched them play a game, change a game, and I don't trust them. So that town hall, I don't know. Wouldn't that be a great spot for Costco? Huh. That was a joke, but wouldn't that be a great spot for Costco? Think about it. That's right on what we need, that street. And, um, let's see, I'm just about done, uh, Dor- uh, biggest box stand, um. Has, mayor, has Jim Campbell been decent to work with?
I haven't worked with them directly. I don't know what staff feels like on that one.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so I wanna mention something and then I go with Gabriela, who's next. Uh, so, uh, Tom, I agree with you about that piece of property that is, is gonna have a lot of value. Um, you know, and we need to be very smart how we handle that piece of property in Fish Hatchery. Uh, Gabriela, question, and then Joe.
Uh, this is, I guess, for Erin. In terms of the redistricting committee that's, that's coming up, I, I, if I recall correctly, you were saying that the Town of Madison wasn't gonna be considered. So my question then becomes, how will we then consider that area for representation on the council in, come October twenty twenty-two?
So they will be added to probably, I don't know if District Four will still be over there, but they'll be added to whatever district is in that area. We just can't take that into consideration when we're making the four evenly distributed areas, unfortunately. Because you have to have, all four districts have to have, um, within certain percentage point, the same number of people in it. We just can't take that into, into factor, knowing that it's coming in, in a year. It's really frustrating. Um, so unfortunately, we can't, but obviously they will have representation. There will be a council person who, uh, covers that area. It will be added to, you know, whatever district that is over in that area.
Or two districts, maybe, if it's-
Could be, yeah, 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 could be.
So before I forget, and it's related to, uh, to election, is in November twenty-two, there're gonna be election for governor. So how those, you know, so the people of the town need to know where to vote, it's gonna be another-
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
One of the many things that it-
Yeah, I know.
Happened in the middle of the, the year, it should have happened January first, is many things that was not done well.
Yeah. Okay, Joe, you're next.
Yeah. Um, going off of, um, one, what Tom said, and two, what Gabriela said, so, um, just a comment, you know, in regards to Tom, uh, I, I agree with you that we should be sort of vigilant in kind of our communication with, uh, the City of Madison. Um, my angle is a little bit different in that, you know, I just, I wanna reemphasize that, like, people's lives, you know, get affected when you've got these really crazy, um, jigsaw-like borders, um, both sort of in Leopold neighborhood and, um, in the allied neighborhood. I'm wondering to what extent, when we start taking that on, and I apologize if I missed this in the discussion, um, what sort of community engagement is going to happen around those borders? Um, so that, that residents, um, particularly those that live along those borders, um, have really clear ability to both understand the process and to weigh in on sort of what's within their input and, and what's in control within their input and what's not. Um, so I'm wondering, like, are we gonna do sort of a, an engagement process? Is there going to be, um, a committee? And again, I apologize if I, if this was discussed and I, I missed it.
Uh, yeah, I guess I can take that. We did not discuss that, and I think, you know, that's a great point and something that we will need to do and figure that out in terms of the outreach, the engagement, making sure that people in the Southdale neighborhood especially, uh, because that's where most of the people are gonna be coming from, that they understand, and the business owners as well, though. Um, we definitely will be doing some engagement with that. I'm sure Mike will do that for the businesses, but we do need to do that for the residents as well, not just the property owners, because as you saw, well, I guess you missed that. Ninety-five percent of the people are in apartments over there, so, you know, they're just as important because that, that's where they live, and I'm guessing some of them have lived there a long time. And so it is important that they understand how to get questions answered, what's happening, um, I have all that. So that will be a piece that we do need to figure out.
I, I, I would also add to that, um, the, um, schools and the nonprofit agencies, because now, um, Badger Rock Middle School is gonna be on, across the border in Madison, as well as the new elementary school that MMSD is building. Um, and also Briar Patch, uh, is going to be a part of the City of Pittsburgh. If I, if I'm looking at the maps correctly, so I would, I would also sort of include those organizations in the engagement process too.
Absolutely.
Julia, could I, could I just add something to that? As, uh, part of our, uh, quarterly meetings with the colleagues with the City of Madison and the City of Pittsburgh, there have been some very preliminary conversations among the planning staff about kind of a coordination and, and some communication and outreach. You know, nothing defined yet, but that was brought up as something that, uh, we need to have on our radar screen.
And I would, if I'm still on the council at that point, be glad to, uh, you know, be a part of those that work.
Thank you.
Uh, before I go to Dorothy, um, so the, the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative also is gonna, the Southdale neighborhood is gonna be part of the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative. So it's already in the plan for when the next session comes, so we are gonna have some, you know, other, you know, uh, resources to work in that area too. Um, so next is, uh, I think it's Dorothy and then is Tom.
Okay. One good note about the Southdale neighborhood is it is in the Madison School District. So fussing about which schools and whatever, the problem that we have in the allied area with our kids going to Verona's and Allied Drive, kids going to Madison schools predominantly at least, we won't have that problem here. Um, all the kids from Southdale will be going to Madison schools. So that's a good thing. Uh, related to the town hall property, one thing that we want to keep in mind, police, fire, and Public Works have all been there for a whole bunch of years. And they do not have the infrastructure in place to prevent contamination from all those vehicles. So it's going to be a big, um, contamination site, among other things, which will reduce the value. And whatever happens on that property, there's going to be a significant cleanup expense, I would expect. So we, we need to kind of keep that in mind. Um. I would hope when it comes to redistricting that, that, that will be part of the discussion, but not part of the determination of final numbers. But I would certainly hope that we would go lighter on, um, the numbers for that area. Um, we're not only having to consider Southdale right there, but all of the new people that they're building homes for in Terre Vessa are going to be part of that same add-on of numbers that whoever is going to end up representing that area is going to have. So I, I would hope part of the process is to allow whatever districts end up there to be on the lighter side. And I think even if we have to, um, explain that in court or anything else, I think it would be understandable. I also wanted to point out that the Southdale community has a very active JFF office. And she is very in touch with what's going on in the neighborhood. Um, I've talked to her a number of times, and we can depend on her to be a good touch point for the residents there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, Tom.
Um, I wanna bring that back with, um, Joe said a little bit there. It had to do with the squaring off the boundaries, um. Uh, if you do happen to square off the boundaries with Allied Drive, let me tell you what happened, what, uh, I can remember when I was on the street, um, someone'd come up to me on Allied Drive and needed a cop. And I'm standing right there and I couldn't help him. I had to call the City of Madison to get an officer to come out. It's their jurisdiction. We can help them. Um, I'm not gonna stand there and say I can't help them, because I will. But the fact of the matter is, is the City of Madison. But let me give you another one. If you're squaring off boundaries, uh, most of these elders probably don't even know, Post Road is another one. Post Road, our jurisdiction goes right down the middle of the road. On the south side is Pittsburgh. On the north side is Madison. It's that area behind, I'll call it Mobile, the Mobile Station, if you go, uh, behind there. That's all, um, that's in the City of Madison. You know how it got there? Mr. Bowman wanted his kids to go to Leopold School. That goes way back. That area on Fish Hatchery Road, behind Mobile, there's a square there that goes all the way down to Leopold School. That's in the City of Madison. That's, that's not ours. Um, it's just food for thought. That's all I'm saying.
Uh, any other question?
Um, yeah, Julia?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I agree with you completely, Tom. I, I think that we need to not, we need to make sure that, um, you know, the decisions that we're making are not in a vacuum and they're not political or based on sort of somebody's whims or desires. Um, and, uh, I mean, the same thing that you mentioned about sort of being on Allied Drive that literally happened to me this summer. Somebody, there was shooting in Allied Park, and, um, it hit home, like, five homes in Pittsburgh. A bullet landed in a, a pool, um, of, a next-door neighborhood, two-door sound for me. And then whenever, like, when the police were called, um, in Pittsburgh, you know, they had to pass it off to Madison, so. Um, sorry to, not to beat a dead horse, everybody, but I, I agree that, like, we definitely need to have conversations about, like, getting this right.
Okay, um, another question that I have for Mike, or the mayor. So regarding the land use and the zoning, so when we, um, do we need to follow up their own, this zoning on land use, or we can, when we annex that those parcel, we can change to our, you know, we can determine those zoning or land use to be different. I don't know, we, we, you know what I mean?
Mayor, did you wanna take that one, or?
Uh, I mean, I think, I think the answer is that once it comes to us after the annexation, then it's subject, uh, changing, just like anything else, you know, you can do, uh, you can submit twice a year now something if you wanna change, uh, zoning on any parcels.
So, but we don't need to, uh, so practically, we need to follow what they already designed for those areas for land use. Then if we need to make any modification, we need to do.
We need to follow it's in the Southdale, uh, plan for zoning, um, and then from there, we can change it if needed.
My other question is, I, I think we mentioned when we, we, we did the revision of the comprehensive plan, I think there was a chapter regarding this, the Town of Madison, or a couple of pages. Do we need to go back and revise that?
Uh, while we are not revising the comp plan right now-
No, I know, but, uh, you know, but what it wa- I understand that, but we are bringing up, you know, all of these parcels, so do we need to make any adjustment to, to incorporate in our comprehensive plan, or, you know what I mean? I don't remember that it was included or was mentioned, or, I don't know.
Yeah, I guess I don't remember off the top of my head.
Julia, I'll check in with Sonia on that. We'll give you an update on the Southdale neighborhood plan, because everything would need to be consistent if somebody was rezoning a property or looking to do a project once it comes to Pittsburgh with the Southdale ne- neighborhood plan. And we have had some people already asking, especially the property on the east side of Rimrock Road, along Maloney. Uh, I don't remember if it's Maloney Drive or Maloney Trail over there, but a couple of people or developers have inquired about that site for, uh, multifamily, uh, project there. Uh, that falls under the Southdale neighborhood plan, but it's supposed to be at ten to twenty dwelling units per acre. And some of the inquiries that we've gotten on that site, uh, to date have been for more dwelling units per acre than the ten to twenty. But I'll check in with Sonia on that and we'll get you an update.
Um, and my other question is about more legal is, um, as we approach to the deadline, um, and if, you know, like, uh, new project or development come to the area where we are, it's gonna be part of the city, do we need to have any say? Do we need, do we need to, do we need any voice? Or, or we need to wait until October twenty, yeah. You know what I mean? So I don't know. It's, you're on mute.
Aaron, I think you're on mute.
Yeah, I got it, sorry, thanks. Uh, I guess I don't know what happens if someone's in the middle of getting all their approvals when it comes over. But, you know, I guess sadly, like I mentioned earlier, we don't have any say. And as long as it follows what's zoning over there, we don't have any say to tell them, no, we don't like this, or you need to do something different. Um, I don't know about something that is in the middle of the process when it switches over, what happens then. But, uh, yeah, unfortunately, we don't have that, uh, jur- jurisdiction over that, like we should have. That should have been part of the agreement.
Okay, Dorothy?
Yeah, with that, I would love, um, to have a way that we- to have a way that we're aware, like, we, we were just told of a new storage plan for, next to the Girl Scout House. We are public citizens. Everybody that lives in that neighborhood are public citizens. We can rise up and we can say we don't like plans that are being brought forward. As a city, perhaps we don't have much of a voice, but every last one of us as individuals has the voice of being a public person. And we can choose to use that. And in some cases, I might suggest that we do.
Motion detected at the front door. What is that?
That's.
Okay. So, okay, so any other question? Okay, so, so I agree with you, Dorothy, that we, maybe we are public person, but we need to know about this project, too. So we don't know, you know, we are no, you know, I didn't have a clue about this project storage coming there until today, so. So what is, okay, so my question for the staff is, what is next? What is, you know, what is, so I know that you guys are meeting quarterly with the city of Madison, and you're gonna inform the council in the next couple of, from now to the annexation. And then my other question is, I think, how we can press the town to release some, to get some of the number, to get some of the financial, to have an idea? I would like to go and take a look at the, you know. I, I went to the website of the town, and they don't have the minutes or the thing published like we do, or you find stuff from two years ago. So, so, so this is the, how we can find, like, to have an idea how the balance, balance sheet of the city looks like, you know what I mean, so.
I would say, I mean, everything's subject to open records. So if we have to get to that point, obviously, we file an open records request. I'm just hopeful that we can continue to work with the town of Madison and make sure we get the information that we need. So we'll keep, we'll keep working with them.
Okay, and my question is to the mayor, have you met, have you ever met with the, the, what is the name, Campbell?
Jim Campbell is the town chairman.
We did a phone conversation. I think he was on there along with the lady, who's the lady that's their, like, administrator?
Renee Schwass.
Yeah, Renee, yeah, we did, you know, just once. They, they kind of pushed us off a little bit, and then just kind of, you know, essentially, we were talking about some of the different options, and they're just kind of like, yeah, whatever, we're, we're going as is, and we're just gonna play it out, you know, they don't have, unless you're gonna pay them off, they didn't seem to have a whole lot of interest in doing anything earlier. I know one of the concerns we have, too, is with, you know, they already took Fire and EMS and contracted with the city of Madison to provide all that. We do worry about even stuff like the police force. Will they continue to be able to offer the police services, or will they need to also somehow transition that earlier? There could be other services where that's the same thing. So that, that's just another concern that we have going forward is, you know, people know that their, their jobs are going away. I think it's probably getting close enough now that people are just gonna hang on for the payoff and the reverence, but there is the possibility of other services that they end up saying, ah, we can't do this after X date. We need you guys to take it over earlier.
My other concern that I have is, like, how, how the town is outreach in the resident to make the transition to the two municipalities, you know, preparing them, you know what I mean? So I, I assume that you're not aware that this is happening, but it should be happening maybe next year or the, you know what I mean? So, because if I am part of a municipality that is gonna be dissolved, I would like to know as a resident, okay, what is next, you know, how is it gonna happen, how is, you know what I mean? So, so if, if, so my question is, I assume that if they are not planning to provide that outreach to transition the resident to the new municipalities, maybe it's something that we should be doing, isn't it?
Julia, as I mentioned earlier, the respective planning departments, as part of the quarterly meetings, have had some very, very preliminary conversations about having, like, a communication and outreach plan from the respective municipalities there. So that is on, that is on kind of the radar screen and to-do list there going forward.
And we did talk about having kind of a consolidated, consistent message, so that they're getting the same information from both the city and Fitchburg. Obviously nuanced based on which municipalities they're gonna go to, but timed similarly, similar process.
And earlier today, Misty and I had talked about reaching out to Renee Schwass at the town of Madison to request a Zoom meeting or maybe in-person meeting, depending on what she's comfortable with, to exchange some updates and, and information sharing with her. So we'll be following up with that.
Okay, thank you. So it's almost 8:42, so do we have any other question? Dorothy?
I was just going
Yeah, just.
To, to request that
Okay.
they, someone send the Southdale neighborhood plan out to council.
Oh, yeah.
I can send the link out to you.
Yes, okay, thank you, Mike.
And then we'll also send a PDF of the, the slides that we just covered during this meeting. So I'll send that out to you as well.
Yeah, Mike, without going into, like, a tremendous amount of detail, you mentioned sort of like coordinated outreach, who Misty did. Can you give me a sense, just like elevator speech, what does that look like? Is that like letters to people? Is that town halls? Is that? What does that typically look like in a situation like this?
I would say it probably includes, you know, all of the above. I wasn't part of those conversations. The two planning staff kind of met offline outside of the, the quarterly meetings there, just to have that conversation. But I'll see if there's any details yet, Joe, even like a framework, you know, that they're thinking of, and can share that, that with you. But I would say some of the things that you mentioned, you know, seem like they would probably be included in a communication and outreach, you know, plan there.
That, that would be awesome, and I just, I, I wanna say that if there's a way for the council to look at that, and, and also just to keep in mind, having equity lens behind it, make sure we're exhausting all channels possible to make sure people are ready for this, no matter, you know, their income level, their accessibility, their, their you know, abilities, all of that. So I, I just, I, I just ask that we kind of keep appraised of that.
And also, I think when we are talking about public transportation and option, I think Gabriela, for your committee, I think we need to start talking about how we're gonna incorporate this, this part two to this conversation, too. Okay, any other question, comment? No? Okay, so, thank you very much for this update. I think it's gonna be one of many coming. So please keep us in the loop to the council, if any update, new development with the town. So, and I think it was, you know, it, it was a good presentation, a good discussion, so. So I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Who was the second on that? Was that Gabrielle? Did you second?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, okay, so we are adjourned at 8:45, so thank you very much, and see you.